All right, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Hall.
Thank you. Before we begin public comment, I'll read out a couple of reminders. Please keep to topics within the school committee's scope of authority. We encourage civility. Be mindful of the fact that this is a public meeting which is being livestreamed and recorded for all ages in our community. Please be aware that this is not an opportunity for discussion and you will not receive a response at this time. You will have two minutes for your comment. Longer comments can be sent to the school committee via email. And first up, we have Amanda Zeller. You can come on up to the mic here. Glad you made it.
It'll be the, it's the smaller one, you can pull the...
Oh yeah, we've got a weird setup there too. So yeah, just name and address and then you'll have your two minutes for your comment.
6A Noble Street. I'm a little bit late. This paired better with last month, with two weeks ago meeting. But I felt the need to follow up on the honoring of our performing arts leaders in the district. I was very pleased to see that a neighbor of mine sits at the table every day, and another neighbor of mine spent time sharing her experience as a performing arts teacher here in the district. I'm excited to see our music and performing arts leaders on your agenda and regularly honored in our school district. As a member of our Clipper Arts Performing Arts Group, a parent organization that has come together to focus on increasing all student access to music and performing arts in their school day, I look forward to more recognition of the efforts of these amazing leaders as we saw in our Waterfront Festival the other day and as I see in my own household on a daily basis and in my neighbors' yards and in my neighbors' homes. Performing arts are incredibly important. So I hope to see as we continue to prioritize this as a staffing and scheduling decision in our district, that this is an incredibly important part of our students' daily, regular, and ongoing experience. In our Newburyport Public Schools, it is near and dear to my heart as a performer and as a musician, and I know it makes an incredible difference in the lives of my children and in the lives of my neighborhood and in the lives of all of our Newburyport students. I really, really am excited to see that kind of support for that initiative in our schools and I hope to see it continue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Art Courier. Why don't you just give them to Melissa and we'll, we'll pass them around? Yeah. So same deal, you can just state your name and address and then you have your two minutes.
Art Courier. I'm a Newbury Porter who's living in Salisbury at 12 Partridge Lane. As, and I'm serving on a variety of community organizations. And this is, I just want to share the fact that the sustainability question is a major one and the work of Jen and Katara and what they're going to report on is to be commended because there's a big picture coming at us. So what I've provided for your background are some key considerations for adopting best practices for managing waste in our communities. And it is a significant issue. It's way beyond what we even realize now. So as we look forward to what we need to deal with, having collaboration with groups in the schools, in the community, and in organizations and businesses is going to be very vital to our being successful as a sustainable community. So I want to honor everybody that's making a contribution and if you're not, I'll ask you to make one. Thank you.
All right, so next up, we have our staff recognitions, very special recognitions tonight.
Thank you. Hi Sophie. It's okay. All right. So our first recognitions, we've got a few of them tonight. So this is, as Vice Chair Hall said, a very special day for, for all of us and especially day for these educators of Newburyport and all of the families that they've impacted over these many years. So I'm going to read the retirees that are not with us first and then the retirees that are here tonight will call you up and give you a little, a little prize. All right? All right. So retiring this year is, who could not be with us tonight, these are the names that could not be here. They give their best. Lisa Alexandra, NOC science teacher, 19 years in the district. So if she's listening, we'll give her a round of applause for her service. Arico Antos, NOC ELA teacher for 20 years in the district. Hey Sophie. Beth Blean, NHS special education teacher, 30 years in the district as of October. Cynthia Klein, Breznerhand cafeteria staff, 25 years in the district. Maureen Lyons-Taylor, Mullen Special Education teacher, 19 years in the district. And Susan Seabrook, Breznerhand IA, 11 years in the district.
Hello?
Hi Sophie, we'll be right with you. Our next awards or recognitions for our retirees that are in the audience and we'll call you up and you can stand up here and hang out with us for a little bit and then we'll do a team photo. All right. First is Maria Hearn, Breznerhand Grade 1 teacher, 37 years in the district. This is the starting lineup. I'm all happy because someday this will be me. All right. Mister, as we all know, Mr. Steve Burkholm, Facilities Director, 22 years in the district. All right. Mr. Peter Hill, NHS Social Studies teacher, 24 years in the district. All right. Mary Lucci, Mullen, 4th grade teacher, 17 years in the district. Aileen McConie, NHS art teacher, 21 years in the district. And Pam Stanley-Jamison, Breznerhand art teacher, 27 years in the district. MTRS says 28, so she got an extra 1% in retirement. Good job. All right, if we could take a, we'll take a quick photo, but before we do that, once again, I just want to thank you all for your dedication, commitment to Newburyport Public Schools. People like you that have given so much back to a community you cannot be replaced. Our goal is to build upon the legacy that you left behind. So thank you all so, so much. All right, we'll do one more. If our retirees could just hang out, we have one more recognition and then we're going to take a recess where our school committee members would like to shake your hands and thank you. All right. Our next recognition or update, we have these faculty members here tonight. As you know, this spring, the district undertook a major reorganization of our central office structure with a primary focus on our Student Services Department. Under the new restructure, we have two program supervisors, one to oversee the academic supports for special education and the other program supervisor to oversee the social, emotional support of the program. I am pleased to introduce our two new program supervisors, both who are very familiar with you all. Ms. Elise Camo has accepted the position of Academic Supervisor. Ms. Camo has been in the Newburyport Public Schools for the past three years as a team facilitator for the Mullen NOC. She is highly skilled and experienced educator and administrator who has taught students with multiple areas with disabilities across all grade levels. Elise understands the complexity of managing staff and resources to build strong academic programs and we believe with her experience and leadership styles, will make a strong fit in this role. So come on up, Ms. Elise Camo. Our next program supervisor is Ms. Gina Gardino. She has accepted the position of the Social Emotional Program Supervisor. Gina has been with the district for 10 years as a team facilitator at the high school. She has extensive experience working with students with social, emotional, and mental health challenges. She is a licensed mental health care worker who has provided the students in both hospital settings and the educational setting. Gina is, was instrumental in developing our therapeutic program, learning programs over the past few years and we're excited to have her on board to expand and to manage our social, emotional programming and supports for the district. Both Gina and Elise are visionary educators and I look forward to their leadership and guidance as we continue to grow and strengthen our programs. Come on up, Ms. Gina Gardino. With Gina and Elise changing positions within the district, we have two open team facilitator roles. As you may also recognize, these are Newburyport Public School educators. The first team facilitator position, Ms. Jess Burke, who accepted the position will be moving from her current role as a teacher in the Mullen School Independent Development Center into the role of Mullen NOC Team Facilitator. Jess began her long career in Newburyport as a BCBA, has supported teachers across the Mullen schools in developing educational approaches to working with many, many students. She is an experienced special educator with strong organizational skills and will be a great addition to the special education admin team. Come on up. And Ms. Amanda Druigan has accepted the position of Team Facilitator at the high school. This year, Ms. Druigan stepped out of her role as a special education teacher to fill an important vacancy as the team facilitator at the high school. Over her time at NHS, she has demonstrated strong educational organizational skills and this year, we've benefited from her responsive leadership style. Amanda has also worked closely with the NHS students, parents, guardians, and staff to create strong programming for our high school students and we look forward to her continued leadership in this area. And come on up, Ms. Amanda Druigan. So I'd like to welcome all four veteran educators to their new roles in the district. They will bring a wealth of experience and are familiar with our school community, allowing us to provide a smooth transition for our children and their families. Each one of these women has shown a commitment to the Newburyport Public Schools, our goals, values, and we are pleased to be able to provide them an opportunity to continue and grow as professionals within the district. So congratulations, that's starting too, right there. Now I think it's time we take a quick recess.
A brief recess.
Sophie, can you unmute yourself so I can talk to you for a second? She's going swimming. Okay Sophie, we're going to be about 10 minutes. So your turn's going to come right after the student rep report, okay? And Sarah will go up and introduce you. I guess. No, it's only she's on the train. No, it's out. No, you're, you're, you're okay. So we just have a lot of people talking here, so Sarah's going to go up and introduce you after the student rep report, okay? Okay, so just give us like seven minutes, just stay there and wait if you can. Okay. I'm going to mute you and then when I unmute you, Sarah will go up and introduce you. The irony is what this presentation is. I can't wear. I didn't see it. This is a meeting. I remember that being an option. I can, but it's just too loud. Oh no, there's, no, there's no, there's no chat in our license. I thought she was going to be first. She's a former student. Four years into graduating. As long as she's watching.
These mics don't project. I think we should talk about this at the retreat. Do you think we should talk about whether to do this this week? Have the interrupt the meeting to do this process? Oh, right. Oh, sorry. That was, that's my bad. Okay everyone, we're going to resume our meeting in just a moment.
All right, we're going to stop back up. Thank you, sorry.
You don't have to go home, but you can't stay here.
All right, we're going to continue our meeting with the consent agenda. No minutes to approve tonight, so just the warrant when you're ready, Mr. Callahan.
I'm ready.
All right.
I move that the following named bills to the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $654,275.92 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Lizzie. It's time for the student representative report. So Mr. Callahan, you're going to move the mic over?
Yes, I am.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, so starting with Breznerhand news, they had their STEM Expo last week. They hosted the annual STEM Expo. They had 16 vendors from community members, including Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, Code and Circuit, Microsoft, and many more. And Spot the Robot Dog from Boston Dynamics made an appearance. It was a wonderful day of exploration and most importantly, our students saw other adults besides their teachers and parents who cared about them and encouraged them to ask questions and think outside the box. A huge thank you to STEM teacher Kristen Spinney for helping coordinate such a wonderful event. For the Breznerhand gratitude garland, on Friday, all 620 Breznerhand students assembled our second annual gratitude garland and it almost wrapped around the entire school. For the past several weeks, students have made links on the garland with handwritten notes expressing gratitude. This is, this is a fantastic social, emotional teaching opportunity for us all to realize the power we have to change our thoughts, which then impacts how we feel, which then impacts the choices we make and how we behave. It's a great tool to help kids get in a good heart and headspace for learning. With the help of parent Scott Ripley, we were able to capture this fun event with drone footage over the Breznerhand. If you have a moment, please check out the video on YouTube of their special morning together. In Mullen news, the Mullen STEM Fair is Friday, June 7th, on the early release day. The Mullen 5th grade spelling bee is this Thursday, June 6th, and our 5th grade students wrote books to read to the 3rd graders at the Breznerhand. In NOC news, congratulations to our track team. We had two first place finishers. Our boys team finished 4th overall out of 32 teams and our girls were 16th out of 34 teams. The medalists were Tyler Lasowskis, who won the high jump and was 3rd in the 100 meter hurdles. Jackson Weber won the javelin. Judah Pills placed 5th in the long jump. Noreen Fadil finished 7th in the 800 meters. Gabriela DePana placed 5th in shot put. Margot Depui finished 5th in the 100 meter hurdles. McKenna Phelps finished 7th in the 400 meters. Our girls 4x400 team of Cameron Todd, Margot Depui, McKenna Phelps, and Quinlan Fen. Congratulations on a great year and big shout out to Coach Weber, Coach LaRosa, Coach Roper, and Coach Bronson. Bronson, sorry. The NOC Students Showcase is scheduled for Thursday. Students are excited to present their achievements this year. Our 8th grade students will be presenting on a handful of powerful middle school learning experience that, that they have had over the years at the NOC and tie one of those learning experiences to one of our Portrait of a Graduate competencies. And finally, in Newburyport High School news, we are hosting the Sailbot Competition led by Sarah Ledbeater this week on Lake Attitash and Amesbury. Last week, our Ignite peer mentors ran activities for incoming 9th graders at the NOC Middle School. These activities provided a space for 8th graders to ask questions about high school while also learning from the insight of their older peers. Tomorrow, our students will participate in the end of year awards ceremony. This ceremony recognizes students' hard work across our curriculum. Additionally, the Junior Book Awards are acknowledged by the Student Council President, Tyler Torbanyan, and Vice President Gregory DiAmbrogio. They will facilitate the ceremony. Student poets Abni Martino, Calli Taffel, and Lucius Nelson performed at the annual Youth at Risk Conference on May 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Lizzie. All right, do you want me to go up there?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, she is on, so you can address her from there, but pull the mic down.
This one? Hi Sophie. Can you hear me? Okay, so we're still working on our audio for you.
No, it should be on there. She should be, she should be fine. There you go.
Okay. So our next presenter is Sophie Corpix and she's presenting to us on assistive technology. Welcome Sophie.
Well, hi. It's, it's great to be here. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sophie Corpix. I serve as the co-chair for the Newburyport Commission Office of Learning. I'm, I'm so happy to be here protecting you about the research project I've been working on for the past year. It's great to be here. It's great to be here.
Is there audio?
Um. Can, can everybody hear that?
Can you go over there, Lisa, just to give her a little reassurance?
Yeah, Sophie, we can hear you. Are you gonna share your screen?
Um, um. Um, hang on. Uh, ju- just give me a second. I know, um, I know Brian, I sent him a copy of my PowerPoint.
Sure. Do you want him to share that instead of you sharing the screen?
Um, um, I, I can do either one. Whatever he sees.
Up to her.
Whatever you prefer, Sophie.
I, um, I would prefer if he would just put up, please.
Can I give us one second here?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. You wanna let her know it's going, and then she can just go through it?
Okay. Um, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you fine. Can you see the screen, the screen?
Yes, um, so, so my project is called Understanding Assisted Technology, um, Barriers to Access and How to. So, before I begin tonight, um, I would just like to go through, um, um, an agenda quickly. So first, I'm going to talk about why I chose this project. Then, I'm, I'm going to talk about the methods I've used during this project. And then finally, I'll be talking about my findings and giving some recommendations. I'm talking about some recommendations. I have first fours, um, um, first four schools in general, and then for all of you as a committee. So, why I chose this project? So, I'm, I received my K-12 education from the Newburyport Public School System. And from 6th, 6th grade until the second semester of my senior year of high school, I did four to six hours of homework midnight. This is because I lacked the computer-based assistive technology support that I really needed. So, when I say computer-based assistive technology, I mean, computer-based technology designed to help individuals with disabilities. And so tonight, I'll be talking about computer-based assistive technology designed to help people with disabilities, um, with, um, um, designed to help people with disabilities in education. So, after receiving, after graduating high school, I attended UMass Amherst. And what I was particularly struck by was how much better the disability services were at UMass compared to the disability services offered at the high school. And so, particularly around assistive technology. So, during my time at UMass, I always, a question I always wondered about is why is this the case? So, that's what this project is about. So for this project, I surveyed students with disabilities, teachers and school personnel who worked with students with disabilities, and parents across Massachusetts. I asked participants about their use of AT in public schools, their awareness of AT, and their knowledge of how to use AT. And then for students, particularly, I asked about the impact that AT has on them. So, so, within my, my survey, got 66 total responses. So, 31 of those responses were from teachers and school personnel. 18 responses were from parents, and 17 responses were from students. So now, to get into, to get into the most important part of my project, my findings. So, for my student findings, I found that students are using AT primarily for speech-to-text and English-to-Spanish translation. And then, I also found that AT offered a lot of positive results. The most important theme increased independence. So, to call an important quote from one of my respondents, computer-assisted technology is huge for happiness because I, I'm glad that I can be as independent as my classmates who have perfect vision. I am also happy other people are using this technology and that it is helping them with their independence as well. Um, so for my teacher and school personnel findings, I found that teachers and school personnel have limited exposure to the range of AT options available. And although they have had some training, it is not enough. So, schools, I also found that schools place priority on getting AT for students, but, but they are falling short on instructing teachers and school personnel how to use. So, to call an important quote from one of my respondents, I do feel like I know a lot of options in regards to assistive technology for my students, but at the same time, I feel like there is so much I do not know as well. So, and then finally, that, that brings us to parent findings. So, consistent to teacher and school personnel findings, parents also have limited options to the range, limited exposure to the range of options available. And again, although there is some training, it is not enough. And, again, schools place priority on getting AT for students, but they are, but they are falling short on teaching parents how to use. And of all the groups I surveyed, parents, parents are the, parents are the least good. So to just, so to just call this final, final important quote from one of my respondents, I don't get much from the schools about technology. So what I know, I found out myself. So, in terms of my recommendations for schools from, from all these findings, I would recommend that schools offer more AT options beyond just the basics. Make AT, make teacher training on AT required. Hold student, hold regular parent and student workshops so that they can support students at home. Bring in experts and make, bring in, and then finally, bring in AT experts and make good use of them. And then finally, some recommendations I have for all of you as a committee, always try to be educated about and aware of this issue. And I'm happy to say that by listening to my presentation today, you've taken a good first step. Next, I would say, take what you've learned, take what you've learned and educate others. And then, next, support the IDA Full Funding Act. So just to give everyone a brief overview of, of what the IDA Full Funding Act is. Um, under the IDA, so, the IDA Full Funding Act stands for the Individuals with Disabilities Education. The IDA stands for the Individuals with Disabilities Education. And currently, under the IDA, the federal government is, 40% of the, of the cost for special education is supposed to come from the federal government. And currently, only 14% of funds of special education funding comes from the IDA. So the IDA Full Funding Act would ensure that 40% of the funding for special education would come from the federal government. And I've included, I've included a PDF of that sheet with more information about the IDA Full Funding Act. And I'd be happy to put it, and I will put it in the chat. So, the next, the next recommendation I have is to contact Seth Rotten, who is, or who, who is the congressman that represents our area. So contact him and let him know that you support the IDA Full Funding Act. And then finally, help others by, help and support others by guiding them to resources. And then finally, if, I think the most important thing to remember from my presentation today is that student success cannot just be gained by grades. Happiness is just as important. So going back to, going, going back to what inspired, going back to what inspired my project in the first place. Because it took me 46, 46 hours, because I, it took me 46 hours to, to do my homework, I didn't feel like I had the damn right to be a social, as I would like to be, and, as I would have liked to be. And I feel very strongly that, that real child shouldn't be in that situation. So, again, that's why I do this work. And I, and to conclude, I would just like to say that I would love to stay in touch with all of you. Um, and so, here, here you'll see my email and my, my cellphone number. And then finally, I'll just say that this project was done through a program called the GoPen Fellowship, which is a program offered through the Massachusetts Developmental Disabilities Council. And in partnership with the Institute for Community Inclusion at UMass Boston. But the GoPen Fellowship also partners with UMass Cham Medical School and the Disability Loss Institute. Are there any, any questions for, does anybody have any questions?
First of all, Sophie, this is Mr. Gallagher, superintendent, how are you?
I'm good.
Nice to see you again. This is awesome. Appreciate all of your hard work. So as part of when you were surveying the schools in Massachusetts, and they talked about professional development, was there specific professional development that they recommended or that you would recommend?
Um, not, not specific professional development. I, I would just say, provide, provide more, I would just reiterate what I said before, provide more AT training for, for parents, for teachers and parents especially. And I would say, make sure AT. And I would say, make sure AT training for teachers and school personnel is mandatory.
Awesome. Thank you.
Also, like I said, hold regular student and parent workshops. So students and parents learn how to use ATs. And I just, I just want, I just realized, I just wanted to also mention that, that a few of my responses when I did my survey came from individuals in Newburyport.
Thank you. Any other school currently in our business?
Can you hear me?
Question from Mayor Ray. Hey, Sophie, can you hear me?
Um, not very well.
All right. Hey, Sophie.
Hi.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
That was awesome.
Yes.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask you, was there something that surprised you in all of the respondents that you got to your survey? Was there something that stood out that really surprised you?
Well, something that really surprised me is that, well, something that surprised me, something that surprised me about this project is I was surprised to learn that assistive technology training is, is not mandatory for both general educational teachers and special educational teachers, but particularly special education teachers.
Yeah, that's important, right?
Yes.
Hey, we have Congress and Moulton coming to Newburyport in a couple of weeks. Maybe we can get you two together.
I, so just to share a little something about my, back, back in, back in April, I attended this disability advocacy conference called the Disability Policy Center. And I actually got to meet with Seth Rotten.
Awesome. You're already a big shot.
Got to talk with one of his legislative aides about my project and about the importance of the IDA Full Funding Act as it relates to assistive technology.
That's great. Well, maybe we can follow up with him in a couple of weeks.
Oh, sure.
All right. Anyone else have questions for Sophie?
Just a comment, I'll, I'll come over. I'm not gonna run.
Hold on, Sophie.
Thank you, Sophie. That was wonderful. This is Sarah Hall. We were emailing to set this up. I just wanted, I just wanted to thank you for all of the ideas and inspiration. I see a lot of potential from your, your presentation. I wanted to let you know that we have a new Director of Student Services starting July 1st, and I would love for him, Brad Brooks, to see this presentation. It's possible he'll be reaching out to you. We're also working to rebuild our CPAC parent organization, and you've given me lots of inspiration for how we could have presentations and workshops, because I think you're right that parents are often the ones who are least informed about these opportunities and the technologies that could really make, make their lives easier for their, for their children. And I loved your point about happiness. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You just got a lot of applause. I hope you heard that.
Yes, I did. Thank you all so much. I just wanted to ask if, if somebody could please email, email me the recording of my presentation, because I would love to share.
That's, that's a yes, Brian. We'll email that to you tomorrow. Okay?
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. Have a good rest of your meeting. Thank you for your time, everybody. And have a great night.
Thank you, Sophie. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Sophie.
Just wanted someone to do it.
Thank you. Have a good night. Bye-bye.
Bye, Sophie.
Lisa, you can close that if you need to.
Okay. Are we gonna have any slides for the sustainability presentations?
Yes.
Yes? So are you working on switching over to that?
Yes.
Superintendent, did you wanna, did you wanna introduce what's coming up? Okay, great.
Yeah, right up there.
Oh, you did? That's great. Glad you were here for that.
I'll introduce you too, and then you can, yeah, students. Awesome. So we're Sustainability in Newburyport Public Schools. I have with me social studies teacher Jen Groskin, who's been leading this charge for a few years, and now her partner in crime is Katana Harding, who's also at the Brezner Hand. You'll clarify that?
Okay.
Yeah. So, so basically, together we'll present a call to action, sustainability in Newburyport Public Schools. And then we also have two eighth graders that they've been working with that will also be part of this presentation. So take it away.
Hi, everyone. I'm Katara. It's nice to be here. So Jen and I have been working together closely for the last two years to kind of tackle some sustainability issues in our schools. So we have some highlights here that we'd like to share about what we've been working on. So our agenda, I'm first gonna talk about the elementary school, because as Mr. Gallagher said, I'm a second grade teacher. And then we will talk about our district-wide Green Coalition PLC that we have been working on for the last year. And then we're going to kind of transition and talk about how we can think bigger picture with our universal practices in waste reduction and looking forward. All right. So back in 2022, this is when I kind of first got involved with this work. I teamed up with Molly Attenborough, who is the Recycling and Sustainability Manager for the city. She was looking for someone in the schools to kind of get kind of like an update of how things were looking in terms of sustainability and what we could do to make improvements. And I kind of opened a can of worms, I like to say, because our schools are such a big part of our city's waste, and there's a lot that we can be doing to improve how we're managing it. So we started a student-led green team at the Brezner Hand School. Our first thing that we were tackling was improving our recycling streams. There really wasn't much recycling happening at this schools because the streams were highly contaminated. Students weren't really being educated on what goes in their recycling bin and why we need to monitor for contamination. So we had, we created a green team, and third grade students every week would go around the school building and check the recycling bins. And then they would issue oops slips and tell the kids like what their oops was, so if there was plastic wrappers in it, that shouldn't be in there. So they would know what they could fix for next week. And then we would give green stars to the classrooms that had no contamination in their bins. And this led to a huge improvement in our recycling stream. Recycling actually was happening again because the stream was not contaminated. So that was great. So we've kind of, from there, we've kind of, I teamed up with Jen, and Jen's done a ton of work on sustainability in her time at Newburyport Schools. So we teamed up and decided we needed to kind of make this a district-wide initiative. So some of the things we were doing is we, you know, talk about it at staff meetings, we have green team projects, and we're kind of trying to kind of mimic like what the city's doing with their Newburyport Resiliency Committee, so that our schools are aligned with those practices. One of the big things that we started in 2022 was composting in the schools. So we teamed up with Black Earth, and they are our city contractor now for composting in the schools. There was some composting happening prior to COVID, but when COVID hit, everything went to single-use plastic, and a lot of the momentum kind of went out the window. So we kind of got that back up and running. So students in grade one to three are composting in the cafeteria now. And then the kind of added bonus, I think, that kind of makes it come full circle for the kids is that back two years ago, the PTO funded raised garden beds in the back of the school. So we have four raised garden beds, and they were built by Black Earth, and so it kind of ties it full circle for the kids. They can see that their food scraps in the cafeteria then turn into compost that we use back in the gardens to grow more food. So they can kind of see the life cycle of, you know, what happens when they compost, which makes it a little bit less abstract for our youngest students. And so the gardens are still going, and we still use them and continue our partnership with Black Earth. So some of the outcomes from our first year, or my first year really getting involved with this work, we introduced school composting, which has been going great. Some classrooms are also composting. We dramatically improved our recycling rates and reduction of contamination. We have a great partnership with Black Earth, which, you know, there's a lot of things that we can continue to do in partnerships with them. We have the community gardens that we built. We actually just built five new raised beds in front of the Brezner Hand. Those are funded by the NEF, also through Black Earth. So there's a lot happening with Black Earth, which is great. We've increased staff awareness and involvement. There's now teachers, other teachers from the Brezner Hand on the green team that are involved. So it's becoming more of a community effort. Some of the challenges from year one, staffing, custodial, buy-in, and involvement and participation. So change is hard for people, and new systems being put into place can be slow-moving, but we're on the right track. There's also some barriers within food service. So getting rid of the styrofoam and the plastic, single-use plastic, there's some issues there. Not every school has a dishwasher, so we're trying to figure out how we can problem-solve and make it as sustainable as possible. And then the last challenge is just managing contamination. It's a lot of work to run the screen team, and we just want to make sure it's sustainable so that it can continue for years to come and staff doesn't get burnt out from it. Jen, do you wanna do the next word?
Sure.
Okay.
So I should, I should note, like while Katara is mentioning this, a lot of what you see in terms of the outcomes and challenges, and particularly the outcomes, is really due to her efforts at the elementary school. So this is definitely something, you know, when I was talking with Katara in the, like, winter through spring of '23, she had asked me what's happening at the middle school. She had been told like I was a contact and full transparency. She was my child's second grade teacher, so I knew who she was. So then, like, you know, it was an easy connect for us to kind of chat. And so we sort of connected, and I said, you know, there's not a lot going on at the middle school. And in order for her students that she had gotten to appoint as third graders to move forward, you know, we really didn't want to have it end at the Brezner Hand. So we're trying to come up with what would make sense for the district in order to expand. This is happening at a time when in the district, you have numerous PLC offerings, PD offerings in the district, and a lot of teachers are signing up for all these PDs. And it occurred to me that it probably would be a positive thing to get lots of teachers involved, to take some coursework, get a little bit of in-service credit, but meet our sustainability goals. So to move us forward, because we knew teachers just were not going to volunteer. But we also knew that there's an urgency and a need for the district to start to align itself with what's happening in the community itself. So we said, why don't we try and offer a summer PLC course, so that we can get lots of teachers from across the district involved in this work? And so it wouldn't be volunteer. It would be something that teachers would learn about, get PD credit, and we'd educate a lot of people and hopefully get more people involved. So what we did is we created a summer program for the teachers to come to. We actually invited Molly Attenborough. We actually brought the teachers to Black Earth to see the facility, so that they would have a broader understanding of what's happening here and what's happening at our state around waste reduction. And then in that group, we started to talk, because there were two people from the Brezner Hand, NOC, Mullen, and the high school. So the group could really discuss how to advocate and how to create more awareness around this, while educating everyone and making sure people had the same information. So that was very helpful for us. That was our summer program, and we created a five-year goal. Some of those five-year goals are actually already being met now, which is amazing, but also created some universal guides for everyone. And having that same language was really essential. One of the things, and I apologize, I'm not actually nervous, I just have this really bad head cold, or I'm not sure if it's pollen, so this is not how I usually sound. But one of the things that came out of it was this urgency to reduce waste. And just for a snapshot, I wanted to just share with you guys what it looks like on a day-to-day in my building, the NOC-Mullen. And this was sort of the key factor that everybody was like, we've got to put eyes on our reducing waste. And everyone was in agreement, which is wonderful. So we created some universals. But just so you guys can see, like daily at the NOC-Mullen, in the cafeteria, it's about five barrels of trash per day, per day. And they're like full barrels of trash with many things that could be recycled or composted. Grade four is now at a half a barrel of trash a day with the composting. And you'll hear a little bit more from our students about that. Classroom waste itself, there are bins, one trash bin in every single room in the building. There are, I counted, I did the floor plan, there's almost about a hundred trash bins in the building. Now, those trash bins aren't full, and they're not always emptied each day, but just think about the amount of waste that's leaving one building in our district. Oh, I didn't count Central Office, sorry. So it's probably over a hundred trash bins. So hopefully, they don't have more than that. But, you know, as custodial service goes, they do need to empty those. So that's a lot of waste that we're creating in one of our three main buildings every single day. So the group said, okay, we really need to focus on this and figure out how we can reduce the waste, increase our recycling. So the group created some district-wide initiatives. So we knew that there was already composting at lunch grades, am I right, one through three?
Yeah, we haven't done the kindergarten yet.
And we knew that we wanted, our goal was to try and get composting started with grade four at some point during the year. Well, that was our total goal. We knew that composting bins were coming to NHS, they're back, they're there. We knew we wanted to decrease waste in the NOC-Mullen, so we, actually, I know this sounds like a minor change, but we went from two waste baskets in every room classroom to one. So I know that sounds minor, but just budgetarily, if you're thinking, like, that's a plastic bag that you're not using. So that's great, it's also less waste. We created a green team at the NOC-Mullen. They did battery drive, marker drive. They worked on generally learning what kind of recycling need to happen. Our eighth graders and our fifth graders all went on sustainability field trips as a result of this work. We held one PD session where we actually took new teachers who hadn't been in the PLC out to Black Earth and started to talk about what is composting, what's happening. We have more raised garden beds at the, does it have four more?
Five more, actually.
Five more, that just came in. The green team at the Mullen, and I think at the, at the Brezner and the Mullen, I shouldn't say NOC, they both did an Earth Day presentation. We have green team doing recycling collection at the NOC and the Mullen, the fifth grade is all doing it on their own. There is this new thing that we've really created, which is paper recycling bin separation. What we noticed is that if you have a big open bin, everything goes in. So that's creating the contamination. So Katara, you guys had started at the Brezner Hand. It sounds so simple, but it really does make a difference. It's a top to a tall recycling bin just for paper. So only paper goes in there. And actually, people have been pretty good about it, and they know just the paper goes in there. There's one little slot, you can't put anything else in there. And then in the big bin, you can see better if there is contamination, you can take it out.
Another thing just about the paper is that we're finding, like, there's a lot of nuance with recycling, and there's a lot of confusion about what can actually be recycled, what types of plastic can be recycled, and it's always changing. It all depends on the oil market. So we figured, as a school, like, we probably obviously go through paper the most, and that is one of the most, like, monetarily beneficial items to have in the recycling stream. There's always a market for paper, because it can be made into new paper. So that was something that we really wanted to make sure the stream was not contaminated if we were just gonna focus on paper. So that's the reason that we separated the paper from the other mixed recyclables.
And that's been going well. We have them at the NOC-Mullen and Brezner Hand. We have them at the NOC-Mullen and Brezhnehan. Everyone has the exact same signage in the entire district. So even just aligning our language as a district around what everybody sees and what they know is very helpful. The classrooms, offices are composting at the Brez?
Yep, so I basically put it out to any teachers that were interested in composting. We had a decent response. So some teachers have like these little mini compost bins in their rooms. And then we have central compost bins in every hallway, so they can just have a student bring their compost down. I'm hoping that will expand because, I mean, even in my classroom, I fill one of the gallon bins from Black Earth weekly. And so there's really a lot of food that can be kept out of the classrooms too, not just cafeteria. Because we have snack in the classrooms, some kids eat breakfast in the classroom. So I'm hoping to expand that next year too.
Other things we've done, we've done a staff clothing swap at the Brez and at the Mullen, NOC-Mullen as well. So there's a lot more focus and a lot more education. I think the other thing we haven't put up there is that there's a lot more education and language within staff and within students, all the same. So that's key part of this is that education piece.
And like one of the things too, I feel like with, in the PLC and also just talking to colleagues at staff meetings and things is people are like shocked to hear some of these things, they had no idea. And so just hearing like, oh wow, like thank you for telling me that, I had no idea about this is, you know, positive to hear because we really are educating and it has to start with education for not just our students, but for staff as well.
So we created kind of a list of things that we have not done yet that we want to continue doing. So one of the key things is how we're going to continue to integrate sustainability reflected in the curriculum. There are states like New Jersey where across the curriculum, if you look at their state standards, sustainability is part of that. And so you can go to a PE class and they're talking about climate change. So it is part of other states and it's probably something that we should be thinking about as well. One of the other things, we're all thinking about the end-of-the-year cleanup. So we've tried to encourage folks to be mindful. So reminders about what can and cannot go in the trash and also thinking about reducing our actual waste. We've brought students to the recycling center. We brought staff to the recycling center, the entire eighth grade went there. So we want to encourage more active use of that. So even just a marker collection, a simple something like that is saying, wait a second, these are not things you just throw out at this point. They can actually go to the recycling center. Reminders about donation bins. And then also considering connections with our senior center here. Thinking about how can we expand our community connections. We already have people from the senior center who are really eager to come and maybe help monitor our compost bins, which is wonderful. The other piece is also looking at PBE, other place-based education programs related to sustainability for future curriculum initiatives. If you want to do the follow-ups?
So some other recommendations or things that we're hoping for in the future. Continued cafeteria waste reduction. So we're working closely with food service to kind of find ways to problem solve around some of the barriers that I mentioned before. You know, part of it is budget, some of it is staffing. So there are some things that are kind of out of our control. So we are looking at ways of, you know, fixing things when we can. Classroom waste reduction, increase PD for teachers. That's something that Jen mentioned about, you know, adding things to the curriculum, but for teachers too. Like I mentioned, a lot of teachers aren't really aware of some of these issues that we're bringing about. So more PD for teachers, increased instruction for students, increased student leadership. So having kind of the students take that ownership of, you know, these programs that we're putting into place. And then I think probably the biggest priority is that we're hoping to introduce soon is a district-level sustainability policy. So that everyone in the district, all school personnel, custodians, cafeteria workers, everyone is on the same page and not really suggesting things that we should be doing, but it's more of a, this is what we are doing in Newburyport. And that needs to be in a policy. There's a lot of other school districts, neighboring school districts in Ipswich and some around the city that do have all these policies in place. So I've done a lot of research, kind of mimicking their policies. And it seems like when the policy was put in place is when people really started to get on board. So that's something that we think is really important.
So we have a link there of a mock-up of a draft of one. You guys can take a look at that if you will. I think our group this summer will probably take a look at a few of them too and kind of come up with some suggestions. If you'd like to hear about the little copy, bring them back to the table when it seems appropriate. So one of the really cool things about this work is that students are naturally very involved. And I'm going to share with you a little bit about what we do in terms of civic action projects, otherwise known as the IME projects. Sadie and Cam are going to present a little bit about what they've done and what they've learned. But if you're new to school committee or you haven't had a student go through this, the state of Massachusetts in 2018, in their state standards for social studies for grade eight, required that all grade eight students do a civics project or civics action project. We thankfully in Newburyport are well ahead of the game, of course. And so we've been doing them since 2016. And so this project is one of these civics action projects. And so students have to research a topic and then take some form of action that benefits the community in some way or shape or form. Community can be defined in a variety of ways. In this case, it is the NOC and Mullen school. So that is what they're doing. I, I feel like my involvement in sustainability practices is my own personal, can I be involved and do my own IME project? So I feel like that's what I've been doing this whole year and I plan to continue. But these ladies have been doing a great job working with our Mullen students and our NOC students on this. So Sadie and Cam?
Okay, I'm Cam.
I'm Sadie. So over the course of the past couple of months, we've been working to direct and support a pilot composting program with the fourth-grade students. So our first step of this program was to present to them how they were going to compost and why and when. So we showed them a slideshow with all this information and kind of reminded them what goes in trash and what goes in compost. Even though they'd already done it in the Brezhnehan, a lot of them needed to be reminded.
Okay, so we initially started with sixth-grade volunteers because they had expressed involvement. They wanted to involve themselves in the program. So we trained a couple of sixth-grade students to come down to the fourth grade and make sure that there was no cross-contamination between trash and compost during the fourth grade lunch. Waste reduction data, so.
Can you get a little closer to the mic?
Sorry. Waste reduction data. So the fourth graders have been working on this project for about two and a half months. And as you can see, there's been a difference in the amount of compost versus trash. So at the end of March, when they began this project, they were producing 22.8 pounds of compost, which could have been thrown away and only have 13 pounds of trash per lunch. But now at the end of May, they, they saved 28.4 pounds of trash per lunch and produced 10 pounds of trash.
So during this program, something that we were really hoping to see was an educational impact. And so we sent out this same survey to them in March and late May and saw noticeable differences in the students' abilities to compost. As you can see, the students can now understand why this is helpful and compost with limited help. One of the most important things with this program and their knowledge is that they know the difference between trash and compost because while working with such a young age group, they're definitely risked with contamination. And we wanted to ensure that they are able to prevent that in their coming years.
All right. So moving forward, we hope to, we hope that this project will carry on as the new grades come into the Mullen and have it implemented as kind of the standard. And as well as hoping for the fourth-grade students who are currently doing it to carry on with the achievement being waste reduction and education. So we do have some challenges with the program currently.
So one of the challenges that we came across was a need for monitoring. Since all of these students are pretty young, they obviously can't do it by themselves and need some help. And although monitoring is a simple action, it takes a lot of time and time to train them. So for the next years that me and Cameron won't be at this school, we were thinking about how that's probably going to be a challenge to overcome and find different volunteers for that.
We also are hoping for this to eventually become a policy for Newburyport Public Schools as it's clear that potential benefits could come in regards to reducing our school-wide carbon footprint as well as benefiting the education of upcoming students.
As students, we know that there will be challenges and there will be achievements. But like Cam said, we think that this will be a good step towards sustainable community and, yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, first of all, bravo. You know, this was my thing. I was working on this issue specifically in 2019 and early 2020. And then we all know what happened. So thank you so much for bringing this back. You mentioned, so it's the fourth grade this year. Are you thinking of bringing it up one grade each year? Is that kind of where you're headed with it or?
Yeah.
For anyone?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Since the Brezhnehan already is working on composting, we thought it would be easiest to start with the fourth graders since they had already done it the previous year. So we hope that, well, we're not going to be here next year since we're eighth graders, but we hope that as the program continues, they'll bring it up with them. And then upcoming Brezhnehan students will just, it will become a practice.
Love it. So that means then it'll be a bit before NOC students would be composting? Or do you have thoughts about, you're nodding, okay. I just didn't know if you had thoughts about accelerating that or just one year at a time? Great. Great.
Middle schools, you can comment on this as well. Comment on why middle school is a challenge.
Well, mostly because of their cooperation and their interest in this. Like I feel like not a lot of middle schoolers would be willing to involve themselves in this. And especially since we presented it to the fourth grade with an option. I don't know if we would do that to the older grades because it's not that much for them to remember as it is for the fourth grade. But we're hoping to just do it year by year as, like Cameron said, they keep, the grades keep coming up. Like the fourth graders will become fifth graders because the Brezhnehan is kind of helping us with the education part.
Great, makes sense. Does anyone else have questions, comments? Ms. Walker?
Yeah, so very excited. Thank you guys for your presentation. I did have a few questions about the district-wide involvement. And, you know, I know this was a focus on your project at the eighth-grade level. What is the communication with the high school on your, what you're doing at the lower grades? And how, how has that been integrated at the high school level?
So the high school has.
You might want to just come up so that it gets caught on the recording.
So we have several representatives from the high school on the green PLC. But the high school also has National Honor Society that's doing recycling. And the high school also has the E-Club. So they have a few different programs of groups that are already involved. And so our hope is that we would increase education amongst the high school staff because right now there's only a few. So we are running a PLC again this summer. We're trying to, the PD day was great. I think we want to do more of those sessions when we have the entire district available to do that. So if possible, that was excellent, we had quite a few people. But it really is about increasing the number of staff who know because even just in a classroom level, the more staff that are communicating the same information, the easier it is. So we don't, at this point, I feel like have necessarily the strongest traction in terms of staff PD up at the high school. But I think that that's coming on the horizon. So I feel confident that people will share the positive experiences that they've had with the PLC. And knowing that it is PD, like we did, so I should note, we did the summer PLC as one. And then we actually got new individuals to be part of this through the year. So we actually have an ongoing PLC for the year as well. So people get either in-service credit during the summer or during the year or both. And so we've had some people continue and some people join in as we go. So we're hoping that that, we can continue that. And I think we, while it's a lift for us, it benefits everyone if we continue to offer it. Just like other courses are offered with technology or the conscious classroom, once people hear that it's valuable, which from our surveys, asking people, what have you valued? Most often, they've said that this is one of the most practical PDs that's out there. So I'm hoping we can increase.
So obviously recycling is important, but so is reducing the source. And I think you guys probably are limited in your, how far you can go with that because you mentioned there's limitations on what the requirements are for the cafeteria and so forth. But I do think as a school committee, that's where we can have some impact and administration. And I'd love it during budget time if we had some things in front of us next year that related to sustainability and things that we can change or that we can work towards changing that are more systemic across the district, such as you mentioned, not having adequate dishwashing. You know, and I know this has been a challenge for us over time. So I think that's something we'd love to hear more about, that just at the school committee level. We love the initiative you're doing with staff and the students. But for us as decision-makers and budget decision-recommenders, that's where we can have an impact. So please, please do that. And Superintendent, I encourage you to encourage them to bring some of those ideas to our level. And also on the policy, if it's going to be a district-wide policy, you know, we have a policy subcommittee, which I chair. I'd love to see that. And if we, if it's something you want the school committee to adopt for our policies, I think it'd be great to have some collaboration on that. So please do share that with us. This presentation was not in our packet, actually the one that had the link. So if we could get that version and also the one that had the students' slides would be awesome. So thank you so much for your.
I just want to add real quick, just thinking about the budget for food service in particular. One of the biggest things that I've found frustrating at the Brezhnehan is when they're short-staffed in the kitchen, which is obviously out of everyone's control, they have to put out styrofoam and the single-use plastic. Normally we do have the reusable trays and the metal silverware. But it seems like pretty frequently the kids have been, there's been styrofoam and single-use plastic. And now that we've done this for two years, the kids are coming back to class like, ah, there's styrofoam today. And so one of the things, I did bring that, you know, if we could have compostables instead on the days that we do. And I was told it was just not in the budget. So that's something that I definitely want to talk more about. And I just want to give a quick shout-out to the PTO because I did receive funding for, or we did, funding from them to support our green initiative. So they've, in the last two years, made all of their events waste-free compostable. So they're kind of aligning with us and they've given us funding. I just purchased a bunch of compostables to get us through the end of the year and hopefully into next year. So thank you to the PTO.
And Mayor, if this is worth thinking about at a citywide level, I'd love to see us consider eliminating single-use water bottles throughout the school system. So I know there's probably initiatives happening at the community-wide level, but I think we see that at athletic events, we see that at everything. I mean, it's just where people, what people default to. And I think the more we can support alternatives and, and you know, maybe it's not a ban, but it's encouraging other options. I would 100% support that.
Thanks, guys. I do want to say I'm the only school committee member who refused the four-inch-thick budget book this time and said, just send me PDFs. Just so you know, Mr. Gallagher.
Props to you.
I'm doing my part. I just had one question regarding like the paper separation because how does the processing work that's different than our homes? Because our bins are single-stream. So how's the, when it goes out of the blue paper bin into the back of the building, what happens with it then?
So I can see to the Brezhnehan level. So that was, there was some confusion about like, well, what if I have something that's recyclable? Can I still put it in the bin? And the answer is yes. At the Brezhnehan, we only have one bin. At the NOC-Mullen, they have two bins. You have, or just the one, okay. I think the goal like for the Brezhnehan is really just making sure that the paper is getting recycled. But when it does go out, I mean, at least at the Brezhnehan, we were checking the bin. So every single bin that was checked by the green team was then put right into the dumpster. So we were like guaranteeing there was no contamination. That's part of the problem is that's not really sustainable, is having teachers and kids do that every single week, I don't think at least. Because, you know, you don't get paid extra for that. There's no stipend or anything, it's just on our own time doing that. So my concern is that when that goes away, what, it just goes back to either getting trashed, all of it, or just getting dumped with tons of contamination. So that's something that's still an issue that we're still trying to problem solve for. It's just a matter of like manpower and monitoring that because the custodians, that's not their job to monitor that. It's really ours and getting that messaging to staff is a challenge.
The giant bins that Mellow picks up, I know. So the blue separated paper bin really ends up in the same combined bin.
However, it makes it a lot easier to find. When you're looking at contamination, so like when you go on the hall.
Shrink wraps, stuff like that.
Yeah, when you dump like a bin that is labeled on the paper, it's a lot easier to see something that's not in there.
Sure.
And then also in the bin that is open, which are like the big old rectangular boxes, it's really easy and quick for a student scanning that to pull out the trash quickly. Whereas like if there's paper and then like. Whereas, like, if there's paper, and then, like, wrappers, and all sorts of other stuff, it becomes like a lot more complicated. And you can just kind of, you can almost like shake it. But, yes, like, in your home, you are correct, like, there is a mix of things, and many people don't obviously recycle correctly. Our hope is that, in educating our students, we're also educating our families. So, the more students know about what is recyclable, what is in, what goes where, students may be bringing that back to their homes and saying, "Oh, wait, we can't recycle that."
I mean, I'm actually shocked, because we've been doing this for 15 years, easy separating garbage. It's weird that no one knows about it, or that there are people that don't know about it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
At least as a elementary school, like, before I started working on this, it was kind of just like, we were blindly trusting that stuff that went in the blue bin was getting recycled. And I found out, none of it was. Like, the holler was completely empty every week. And that's, the only fault of that is that we weren't educating our staff, our kids enough. So, the custodians, there was milk and food and all kinds of disgusting stuff, so they couldn't put it into the holler. They just trashed it and said, "So, yeah, it's a big issue."
Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you so much for coming in. This will be an ongoing discussion, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget your water bottle. I know, I should have worn a sweater, clearly. Yeah. All right, so Superintendent, I'm going to pass it over to you for the recommendation.
Yes. Well, first of all, I just, Jen Groskin and Ms. Harding, unbelievable work. And all the work that they've done, especially at PLC. We had multiple faculty participate throughout the summer, so we're moving in the right direction with that. First, I just want to thank Ms. Kaylee, once again, for running a thorough hiring process. That's been, I think, one of the benefits this year, of really getting our hiring practices consistent throughout the district. So, this is another position that she took charge of, the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. So, we had 40 applicants apply. There was, committee selected seven to be interviewed. And in our process, three of them got other jobs, a couple of them became superintendents. So, that's how talented the pool was. We had one internal candidate and three external. Lisa Furlong was the internal candidate, and was unanimously chosen as the top candidate in both rounds of interviews. Round one interviews consisted of staff member from technology, faculty member at the NOC, union representatives, principal, educational coach at the elementary school, and a high school faculty member. Round two, we had two finalists. Ms. Furlong was one of them, was the administrator's district literacy coach, principal, and then the business manager. And we're going to be recommending Lisa Furlong. But, before I do that, just a little background. We did provide the background to the school committee, but for the people that are listening, Ms. Furlong, I believe, is one of the most humble professionals that I've ever met. And when you look at her extensive background throughout her career, it's extremely impressive. With her career in education spanning over 35 years, Lisa Furlong has spent time both in the nonprofit and the public world. Lisa holds two master degrees. The first is a Master's of Curriculum and Instruction, and then the second, Master's of Community and Social Psychology. Lisa is a published author on multiple curriculum publications, and has been a consultant in a variety of organizations throughout her 35 years' career, including the Harvard Graduate School of Education, Project Aventure, and Ed Labs at Harvard University. She has designed and facilitated professional development programs in community building, collaborative processes, strategic planning, instructional strategies, curriculum development, and learning. For the past 20 years in education, Lisa has worked in the Newburyport Public Schools in a variety of roles. She started off as a middle school teacher, then became an assistant principal, and then a principal, and most recently, Director of Instructional Technology and Communications. While in these various roles, Lisa has acted as the lead development of middle school and social-emotional program for students returning to school from hospitalizations. She's also guided the development of Integrated Arts Program, designed and facilitated workshops for middle school parents on parenting in the middle years. She's created the Discovery History Program, which combines literacy, historical discovery, and innovative student-parent reading programs over her career. And most recently, has worked with the high school in developing, developing and implementing a one-to-one iPad program, which includes the implementation of a unique lease-to-own in the execution of the Strategic Professional Development Plan for staff in their professional development utilizing the iPads in the classrooms. These are just to name a few of her many accomplishments throughout her tenure here in the Newburyport Public Schools. Lisa is a well-respected strategic educational leader in the district, and is known as a builder of consensus through collaborative leadership. As a result, she's been able to move many initiatives forward, while at the same time creating and fostering a culture of continuous improvement within our schools. For all of the above reasons, and the information that you've received, and then also, I think, your personal interaction with Ms. Furlong over the years, I recommend Ms. Lisa Furlong's position of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, if someone would like to make the motion, all the information you need is on the detailed agenda. Anyone like to, want me to do it? I move to approve the appointment of Lisa Furlong for the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning position, and negotiate a contract effective July 1st, 2024, in accordance with Policy BBA.
Second.
Discussion. Yes.
It's not so much discussion, I just want to say, Lisa's great. I've worked for her, worked with her for a number of years, doing a lot of projects in the NOC, the PBS, PBIS banners, the mural in the cafeteria. What else? The Reimagine Teaching and Learning presentation stuff. She's a satisfying work partner, I guess, I would say. And I know she'd be great at this job. And I think we really got to know each other when we were doing building visits to hire Mr. Gallagher. So, it was a lot of time driving between Beverly and Wilmington and back, to kind of get-to-know-you type of stuff. So, that was very cool, and I was excited to see her name in the list here, so.
Great. Anyone else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We have a few subcommittee updates. Mr. Callahan, do we have an update from FinCom?
I have not met.
We haven't had a recent meeting, okay. Policy, we have a couple second-read possible votes here. So, Ms. Walker, we can do that?
Yep. So, the first item on the agenda for consideration for second reading is Policy EFD, which is the Meal Charges Policy. And we talked about this last time. This would replace the existing EFD and replace it with the new version. This has been vetted by staff and recommended during our audit of the meal service program this year. I am happy to answer any questions, but the details are in the packet.
That's fine. I believe I did see a communication to staff about the change. Was that sent out, Superintendent?
What's, I'm sorry.
I feel like I...
Yes, we did send that.
This is a different, this is a meal policy change. This, the charge...
This isn't about the change to the cost?
This isn't for the adults.
All right, gotcha, okay. Did anyone have any questions on this policy?
So, an appropriate motion, I can make it. Move to approve the changes to Policy EFD as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is File, or Policy FF, which is naming new facilities. Also, we discussed this last time under first reading. Oops, I just lost my... So, this, this policy had some clarification that we added. We discussed this at the policy subcommittee. So, you'll see in the changes, the red line version, we are striking out the specific reference related to, hold on, I have to scroll in. We are striking out the specific reference to the Newburyport Education Foundation. Again, we also had advice from our legal counsel about this. It doesn't mean that this, this right to basically give, you know, auction off naming rights, it's still an ability of the NEF, it's just that it's not specifically called out in the policy. And that we can still have a process for that list to be approved on an annual basis. And then, we also removed some things that, some of the language that was more procedural versus policy, but kept in some of the language that was related to, you know, sort of the intention of why we, why we allow naming of facilities. There are some follow-up items that we would probably eventually wanted to talk about at the school committee level. I know we still haven't resolved, we have, still actually haven't voted on the naming list, which I think we should be doing.
There was a question of, at what time of year? Is it school year, or calendar year?
Right.
Fiscal year?
So, I think that's more procedural, but it would be probably good to just develop a procedure for when we review that list. And then, I believe, school committee members had also asked for, specifically to the NEF, if there was a little more parameters could be given to us on how they make those decisions. But, to, that is not specific to the naming of new facilities policy. That is more procedural, and sort of how we interact specifically with the NEF on that, on that particular ask. So, I think, personally, I think we can go ahead and change this policy. I think it clarifies some things, but I think we still need to work on those procedures, which is, which is really outside the policy subcommittee.
Sounds good. Are there any questions? You can go forward.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the changes to Policy FF, naming of new facilities as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sisal, I think there's just an update on the next meeting, if you want to take that, Superintendent?
Yes, so we, as part of our parent advisory committee in Sisal, we're going to have an end-of-year meeting June 18th, just to kind of review all the work that's gone in this year's portrait of graduate. And I think it would be great to bring both committees together, and we're looking forward to it.
Great. And then, for communications, we did meet, but since Mr. Boger is out, if you don't mind, Ms. Walker, just to...
Yeah, we have, we, or not me, but we invited Council President Ed Cameron to come and chat with us just about overall communications between the school committee and the city council. We talked about some of the things we've already done in terms of having the communication between the two FinComs during budget season. And we also, historically, just talked about how, what the benefits of having the Joint Education Subcommittee were, which is no longer a subcommittee of the council, and how we can maybe find some other ways for regular communications to happen throughout the year, particularly around the budget, so we're not just relying on that one joint meeting in the fall. So, that was good. I think otherwise, we did talk a little bit about, you know, with the superintendent as well, about some of the sort of questions, common, frequently asked questions that come up from the city council, and how we can make sure that those questions are addressed. You know, again, often they're repeat questions, but it's good to keep bringing them back in front of the, in front of the community and the council to answer those questions. I don't know, did I miss anything else that we talked about?
Well, one thing that we learned is that Counselor Cameron is also the Chair of the General Government Committee. And he explained that since the committee, their committees were consolidated, education does now fall under general government. So, that was just lucky, that we had invited him. But, he said that he could collaborate with us in that capacity. So, we were looking at potentially having three joint meetings throughout the course of the year, sort of key touchpoints, maybe a bit before that joint budget meeting in November, so that we can have a little bit of in-depth discussion, so that we know how, we know some city councilors have some of the expertise around what we're doing. So, it would be before that meeting. And then, we were thinking, I guess, before we would do the joint meeting with FinCom, that way, we get more councilors involved. So, general government would meet with our communications committee, perhaps a week or two before we meet FinCom and Budget and Finance, just, you know, get them more on board with what we're doing. And then, again, we would meet maybe late May, before the budget hearing, again, to answer questions and just stay connected on what we're doing.
Who's meeting would that be?
So, we didn't get too specific on details, but the idea is that, the idea we were discussing was how the communications subcommittee of the school committee can work with the general government subcommittee of the city council, so.
Okay.
More to follow on that.
Yeah.
I just, right, some of the issues with the former joint ed was that it was actually a city council meeting, and we were kind of like summoned to them, in a way.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, so we talked about that.
I'd just like to avoid that again.
Right, so this would be more of a joint...
Yeah, this would be two subcommittees joining forces to meet, not, not having a separate subcommittee or a separate committee formed specifically.
Yeah, I think that was it. Thank you. Elwin, it's you again, and Mr. Callahan, for fundraising.
I can introduce. Do you want to introduce?
No, you can.
I can.
You can.
I will, because Ms. Walker did the entire report on her own. So, I'll just, I'll take the grandstanding part of it.
Got some credit there.
Everybody here is aware that we started this fundraising advisory committee months back. The thing, for me, that kind of started it all was the concern of extraneous funding for sports, to parents, and the extra cost that costs them, costs the families, after they've already paid a lot of money to play the games, et cetera. And it evolved very quickly with Ms. Walker's help into basically all of the entities that fundraise, the boosters, the PTO, the NEF, Athletics Department. And we had individual, we had one joint meeting where it was everybody, and then quickly decided to have separate meetings for each of those entities. And they all went pretty well, I thought. And this report, which is very good, thank you, Ms. Walker, hopefully ends up in a place where we have a recommendation to do something, in my mind, changing the way those things are done currently, so.
Thank you.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. I would say, Mr. Callahan definitely was the organizer and facilitator. He brought a lot of these folks together. And I think it was great that we were able to meet individually, after we quickly realized there's different issues to talk about with different members, so, or different committee folks. So, we did, the report basically summarized, and we also appreciate the staff participation. That was very helpful as well. So, the report, we summarized basically what we covered at each of those individual meetings. We, we did learn, you know, there's some information here, I think, that would be helpful to committee members about what, how each organization functions, what they primarily do for fundraising activities. I think, you know, just to start with, a quick summary of the, of the key points. Newburyport All Sports Booster, which, you know, is, is basically, does run, fundraise for all sports. They have very specific goals of what they fundraise for. And their activities are pretty consistent throughout every annually. They do the same kind of things. They are, the one thing I think to note, that we note in our recommendations, they are not currently a 501(c)(3), even though now our policies, we do encourage that. It's not that they can't, can't operate, it's just that it would be better if they were a 501(c)(3). So, that was one thing that we include in our recommendations. And then, they sort of are very focused in what they allocate those funds for. So, they have sweatshirts for junior athletes, scholarships for graduating seniors, and direct requests from coaches that they consider occasionally. And then, the Newbury... And then the Newbury, they also operate the Snack Shack, which is at the football games and other, but other sporting events, but not every event, and they staff that as well. And then the Newburyport PTO, a very organized organization, if I can say it that way, they are a 501(c)(3). There is quite a lot of information on their webpage about what they do and what they fundraise for, and they have, you know, sort of annual report and things like that. To me, that's pretty, it's pretty transparent, what they do and what their purpose is. They are an all schools PTO basically as well. There used to be individual PTOs for each school, but they are now all under an umbrella. Some of the things we talked about with them, I think were just around sort of communication to parents and to teachers as well about why, why we're doing fundraisers, and how many asks are going out, and how those asks are being communicated. And one, one thing in particular, which was in our recommendations, is the wish list, which goes out to, which they manage, but they don't actually do anything with in terms of monetary contributions. They facilitate a wish list that each school, I guess, distributes, it's a Google form now, that parents can pick things off the list and donate, and the PTO actually plays no role in that, but it can be, I think there needs to be some clarification, we both thought that, because it could get tricky. It's not clear what the parameters are for what goes on that list. It gets a little tricky, I think, when, and I'm sure teachers are aware of what their ethical, you know, obligations are, but when you're asking for certain things and there could be a slippery slope between, you know, what's going to the particular teacher versus what's being used by the school. So I think we need some clarification on how those wish lists are managed. And then we talked about the NEF, I think everybody's pretty aware of what the NEF does, they are also an organization that has a lot of information on their website about how they spend their funds and what they do for, to raise funds and what their purpose is. And then we had a great conversation with the athletic program, that's included in your packet, what they provided in terms of a handout. I would say that they have, we have been talking about this for many years, I know Mr. Callahan has, and I think the staff understands that we have concerns about what fees and fundraising and where those two lines come together and what's being funded by the budget. And they have been trying to make improvements, and, and I think the, the presentation is evident of what they're, they're trying to improve upon. So to get to our recommendations, there are a number of policy-related recommendations which we'll be bringing forward from the Policy Subcommittee eventually that relate to sort of, you know, what, what guidance we provide as a district, as I mentioned, to things like direct solicitation of, of parents and of families, that's the, the first policy listed, updating our language on, on how students can be involved in fundraising, monitoring student activity accounts, which actually we, you know, we, we understand the superintendent's not resisted to this, and I know Mr. Little Hale probably isn't either, just being, doing a more regular audit of those, that is something that Dussie recommends and that the MASCE policy also encourages, and I know Mr. Callahan has been asking about that, so doing a more regular auditing of the student activity accounts, updating our, our, our language, we already updated our language around PTOs, where I mentioned the 501(c)(3). We, and then I think that was it, I think we've changed the other two policies. I mentioned earlier tonight, the NEF naming opportunities, so working on some procedural and guidelines that we can give to them specifically about how, how that naming, what, what they can name and what they, and how that communication happens with us. PTO fundraisers, talking about having some communication, some procedures about what the PTO is, you know, what, what the steps are for the PTO fundraisers, and being clear about how those fundraisers are communicated to parents and guardians and the purpose of those. Again, this is not to like say that they're doing anything wrong, it's just to be more clear in our communications with, with parents and families. And then, and then what, for their benefit, what, what, what are the clear procedures for how they get approval for doing those, those fundraisers? I talked about the wish list, the overall need for some guidance there, and whether we want to do wish lists, because I think one of the concerns we had is if there are wish lists for, you know, pens and papers and sticky notes, why isn't that being funded out of our school operating budget? And so I think a little more, you know, scrutiny of what's going on those wish lists and why.
And gift cards too, is a concern.
Yeah, and the gift cards is definitely a concern, yeah. And then athletics, just some recommendations here in, including our current procedures in a way, in places that can be easily found. I, I did a quick scan, and I know our website is in process of being updated, but for example, the Athlete Parent Handbook, I think we should try to encourage including our procedures around fundraising in that handbook. And then I mentioned the completing regular audits of the student activity accounts, and then we talked about this when we met with the Athletic Department, and I know Superintendent, you're, you're open to this, developing guidance, restricting the use of fundraising, you know, just sort of providing some guidance related to what fundraising should be used for. So for example, we talked with the Athletic Director about, you know, you know, can, he, he said, "Do I have to prohibit all fundraising of, you know, uniforms?" And I think, you know, Mr. Callahan and I both have concerns about fundraising for uniforms, but if it's a specific, like add-on to a uniform, maybe that's where, you know, you're more flexible.
Warm-up jackets.
Yeah, exactly. So I think helping them understand, like, what our concerns are and, and giving some guidance collaboratively that we all are on the same page.
Kind of interject from, and I think some of that also with the uniforms in particular is that there's a lack of equity there, like the baseball uniforms are way older, you know, they're torn up or whatever, and I hear this directly from the parents of the players. But the football uniforms go, they have a washing service for them, so parents aren't sitting there washing them Sunday, or Saturday afternoon, or Sunday, whenever.
Wednesday game's football, Saturday.
The next day. So it's just, it's, it's unusual that one thing gets that benefit and the others don't. And I can tell you that even track uniforms are really gross after a meet from having had them in my own home. So just things like that, that was another just part of it. I don't even know what we can do about that, because I don't know who pays for the washing of the football uniforms, you know? So anyway.
Yeah, no, and I think when we, we brought these issues up, I think the Athletic Director and other staff, you know, they acknowledge, like, equity is definitely a focus, they, they don't want things to be inequitable, so just sort of chipping away at different things that we can do to make things, you know, more, to support that. Communications, just sort of another bucket is, you know, we have, if we have procedures and we have policies, how do these things get communicated? And I think, you know, making sure that both, for athletics in particular, both parents, athletes, and coaches are all getting the same information, and, and that includes parents, you know, who are just, you know, part of the team, or parents of the, parents and guardians of the, of the team members, but also parents who are maybe involved in fundraising activities so that they understand, like, they're all, they're all operating with the same perception of, like, what is appropriate to fundraise for, what should the school be covering, why are we doing these things, and, and have those clearly posted on the website. So there are some sort of next steps in this recommendations, I'm, you know, I don't, I don't want to say that we should exist forever, but it might make sense to keep the fundraising advisory committee kind of going in some fashion to sort of figure out what our next steps are outside of the policy recommendations. I don't know if Mr. Callahan, you had thought about that at all, but...
No, I'm, that's fine, meet every six months or something like that, you know? See, and I'm sure things will come up through the course of the year until there is solid changes made that I will bring to the table anyway, or just tell Mr. Gallagher about directly.
I mean, if you want to...
He loves those calls.
You don't want, you don't want Mr. Callahan to keep talking about this topic, so let's try to, let's try to figure out a way...
It's like my new ice cream.
Let's try to figure out a way to, like, you know, shake things, things out of this list so that he doesn't have, you know...
We took care of it.
I second that. So I would, I would suggest, yeah, and the...
It's like four years ago now.
Maybe it was...
That's my next thought.
My suggestion is maybe we look over this list, maybe we have a follow-up meeting with the superintendent and look over this list and sort of say, okay, this is something that goes in the, you know, athletic department bucket, can they work on this and sort of give a timeframe? Maybe this goes in the, you know, superintendent bucket or, you know, administration. And so, so maybe that would be a good next step.
Yeah, that'd be great, the two of us in Sean's office, summertime coming, so you'll, you'll have time, right? You're not taking any vacations this summer, right?
Loads of free time. But, but I would just start out to, if anyone had questions on anything we went over.
Yeah, I think just from the dialogue and the work with this, on the school side, I think we're, I think we're pretty close to, you know, I think everyone got to listen, and, and I think a lot of the policies that we have in place, it's just really, as you said, communicating them out and making sure we're providing guidelines for all these different organizations, so I think we're in a good, good place right now moving forward, so.
Yeah, and it may be helpful to share this report with the folks we met, maybe Brian, that's something, Mr. Callahan, that's something you could do, share with the folks we met.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
All right, we'll be quick, because a lot of these events, you all were there, so. A great week last week for our senior class, 2024, they opened up with their graduate walkthrough, so this was a nice new tradition that we started a few years back, where the senior class walks through the Brezner and the Mullen and the NOK in their graduation gowns. And what's really neat is it does two things. Number one, it gives the opportunity for our faculty and support staff that taught these students many years ago, it's, it's a very emotional day for our teachers and some of our students, because they make that, they reconnect with the teachers. And then what I really love is the enthusiasm of our younger students, I mean, the Brezner and students, the Mullen students, they make signs, it's, it's just such an awesome day. Great way to kick off that week, the senior car parade, from my understanding, I heard it was a great, a great event, saw some pictures of the mayor handing things out, and want to thank the NEF for all of their work for the, the class sponsored, the class photo that the NEF sponsored and gave to every single graduate, and I'll get up a little bit earlier next year and I'll be there.
Can I give a little sidebar on this? So everyone knows how funny it was? I'm not sure, I'm not sure Sean.
Not for me, it was not funny.
So, uh, my son graduated, so our car was in that, and it was, we were kind of near to the front, I guess, we got to, we got to the Brezner promptly at 9:30, and as we're going around, we're, we're coming around onto Topman's Lane, and, you know, the display in my car goes, "Sean Gallagher," so I'm like, oh, and I pick it up on speaker, got the two kids in the car, my wife, and he's like, "Callahan, I got pulled over." And I was like...
Did you know you were at Speaker Pub?
No.
You do now.
I didn't know.
And so I'm like, I'm like, is he just, is he making a joke, you know, what's, what's going on? And I was like, "What happened?" And he tells the story which he told at the graduation ceremony, and I'm like, "I don't know what to tell you." He's like, "I may have to jump in your car." And we're like, "Okay, well, let us know," and that's the end of the phone call. That didn't happen, but my, here, my daughter in the back, and it's a Mini, so it's tiny, and she goes, "Mr. Gallagher's gonna jump in our car? How's he gonna fit back here a little bit?" Anyway, sorry.
It's all right, I appreciate you sharing.
It's nice, it's all a lot of, all a lot of fun.
Ties to Newburyport.
All right, moving on, moving on.
Moving on, so the same day, it was actually a great community event, we had the pride parade, and, you know, as part of the, being part of the Human Rights Commission, you know, it was just a wonderful event, as, as the mayor knows, for, for our community, the school community, the, I guess, participants doubled, I think, in the praise.
At least, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it's just awesome. Just a great day for the city of Newburyport, and I'm just very proud to be in such a community that really emphasizes a sense of belonging for everybody, and I think that's awesome. And then graduation, another beautiful day, I was happy for the families, they got to share that important milestone, and I was happy for Mr. Wolford didn't have to be calling people and telling me he was inside this year, so that was great. And that's it I have for the senior events, and then just one other piece is, we'll be sending out a, as part of our ongoing efforts in Portrait of a Graduate, we're sending out a survey, and we're working, it's the Education Vital Signs Survey, it's gonna be a short survey that will go out to parents, developed by six seconds, who we've been working with, and that's also with Michael Eetman. So staff, parents, guardians, and students in grades, and the students in grades eight, 11, so all parents will get the survey, but students in grades eight through 11, will have the opportunity to reply on a short survey this week through the end of school year. So it's gonna provide qualitative and quantitative data in the areas of community engagement, learning environments, and well-being. The results will help us understand where our students and adults see the district excelling, and then what areas we can improve on. A full report will be created by six seconds, and then we'll share that in the beginning of next year. So I just think that that's also been really important, I think, for our school committee, about surveying as many stakeholders as possible, and this ties directly back to the Portrait of a Graduate, so that will be going out at some point this week, and we'll keep it open, I think, all the way to the end of June. And that's my superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. New business, I have a couple quick items. I am looking at moving these, our summer retreat from August 5th to August 19th, so it would just be the Monday two weeks later. Have you figured out yet if that might work for you, Ms. Shaw?
It's still a question mark.
Still a question mark, okay. Well, I know that, that, that's a better date for you, Ms. Walker, right, on the 19th? So when I talked to the superintendent about this, we were thinking maybe we would just, we could keep August 5th on there as a business meeting, just kind of as a placeholder, but we would very likely cancel it, and then we would have our, a summer retreat on the 19th, that still gives us one more meeting prior to the start of school on Tuesday, September 3rd, so I think we'd all be comfortable with that. And so I'll follow up with you.
Yeah.
But I think what I, what I could do is when Joanne gets back from her vacation, just, I think I would just have her fix it on here, since this is, you know, it hasn't started yet, it would be easy enough, I think, to just fix it and have a quick vote on it at the next meeting.
Yeah.
So. Is that 19th, is that something you could put on your calendar and potentially commit to?
Yep.
Right, and Mr. Callahan, you had said that was fine.
Yep.
19th? Hmm, what's, should we talk?
It's my anniversary.
Oh.
That's, that's okay.
Yeah, but it's a Monday, you'll probably do something the previous Saturday.
Yeah, all right, well, we can talk, but I...
Tell me what I need, something for my anniversary.
I think that that date is gonna work for the most people, so.
No, it's fine.
And I did also want to mention, for anyone who's not aware, the city council is having their budget hearing on our school budget tomorrow night, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in council chambers, I will be there, Mr. Callahan will be there, I don't know if anyone else can attend, you're definitely welcome.
I won't be there, but I would say that was something that Council President mentioned when we met, is they encourage school committee members to speak up in support of the budget.
Both Ms. Hall and I anticipate speaking up.
We are planning on doing that, I actually reached out to Counselor Z today to make sure that there would be time for us to, to come up and speak, so.
Great.
Yeah. That's all I got, anyone else? Any new business? Yes.
And one item, I'll keep this fairly short, because I feel like a popsicle in here, maybe put that on.
Yeah.
Raise the heat a little bit. So I, I spoke with this, I spoke to the superintendent previously about this concern, I just want to raise it as, to the full committee. So I wanted to ask the superintendent to look into the use of technology in our schools, and so I know we have a one-to-one iPad program at the high school to really capitalize on the assets and benefits that technology can bring to learning, but there's also a downside to technology, especially for our younger students, and so I have kind of two, two different overarching concerns, and these are not specifically targeted to our schools, because I don't, I just don't know the extent of whether or not there is a problem in our schools, so that's what I've asked the superintendent to, you know, look into. So the two issues I'm, I'm looking, asking him to look into is, one, at the elementary level, is the technology that students are exposed to on like one-to-one screens, like their tablets or Chromebooks or whatever they have in front of them, and so there's a lot, especially since COVID, there's a huge influx of educational games, technology, things like that, that kids are playing, like one-to-one. I ready... iReady, Lexia, ST Math, these are all examples. We have iReady in our schools, I'm not sure about the other ones. And those programs, you know, put out, you know, we recommend every student does 15 minutes a day or 30 minutes a day or whatever it is. It's a lot of time, it adds up over the course of a week that kids are on these programs. They also become, they can become a crutch for teachers as well when they want to pull small groups, right? And it's everybody else go on their iPad and pull up one of those educational games and play with that while that, you know, I work with small groups of students. And, you know, I think what that, it potentially is an issue because kids just today are spending so much time in front of screens outside of school that if they're getting, you know, additional 30 to 60 minutes, whatever it is, in school of scheduled time, that's just adding hours in front of a screen where they're not socializing with each other. And so, you know, I think there's a lot that can be said for when they're in small groups, how much are they getting out of the game on this tablet, whatever it is, versus problem-solving with each other, talking with each other, building a level of frustration, right? Of, you know, I'm frustrated with this other kid right here that won't share with me, right? Or that I need to read out loud to the student next to me instead of, you know, headphones and talking into the tablet. And I'm sure that, you know, going to sound old here to any kid that is out there listening, but I was a kid of the 90s, I remember them wheeling in the cart of the TV and that being really exciting. Now, every teacher has a projector and a screen, and the accessibility to like a reward of watching a show or watching a video or something, it's a lot more accessible than like your once-a-month, the cart gets pulled into the room. So I just asked the superintendent to look into, not the, necessarily the offhand rewards that tech might be, but what is that, the actual scheduled time that our students have on technology built into their schedule, you know, iReady, 20 minutes per day, whatever it is, right? And what does that look like across the board, just to get a sense for what is the timing that's going on in the elementary school? And then the middle, the Mullen and the NOC, just a little bit quicker is the cellphone issue, right? We know that social media is a really big problem. Cell phones is a big distraction for our students. I think more and more studies are coming out recently about the impact of social media on students' mental health, especially in girls. And so how can we sort of limit that? And there's a lot, there's only so much we can do, right? A lot of that happens at home and with families and their own rules and policies, but what happens in the middle school, you know, is that it's a distraction in the classroom, right? Under the desk, under the table, in certain classrooms? Maybe it's not. Maybe it's a distraction in the hallway, if they're allowed to use it in the hallway, that's a distraction of like, you know, the people, they start to get antsy, right? It's a addiction. At the end of like that 42-minute period, can't wait to go check, check my phone, see what happened, what did I miss in 42 minutes, right? Versus a complete cellphone ban where you don't get to look at it for six hours, and how do you like build that stamina where I don't have contact with, you know, whoever for that amount of time? And so you could kind of promote some good habits by creating that type of ban. And so another reason I wanted to ask the superintendent to look into that type of thing is, I'm not sure if you saw it, but recently the Ipswich School Committee has, I'm sorry, the Ipswich Teachers Union has actually asked their school committee to consider a cellphone policy ban, that it would actually be easier for them, you know, in schools and in teaching if there were no cellphones around, that they could, you know, be better educators. And so if that's happening in other communities, I'm just interested in how do our teachers feel about this first? You know, I don't want to bring this, say that this is a problem in our schools when I don't know if it is, but this is a, concerns that I have, you know, that is potentially an issue. So I've asked the superintendent to see if he can survey the staff, survey the teachers, maybe pull focus groups, just figure out from them, are they, do they see this as a problem? Do they see it as something that needs to be addressed at our level and just kind of bring that information back to us? And so again, I know that there are policies of no cellphones in class, doesn't mean they always get followed, right? And where there's, there's policies where you're allowed to use it in the hallway or not allowed to use it in the hallway. And again, what does that impact throughout the rest of the day? And I'm just wondering what the teachers feel about that and if any policy might need to be addressed like going into the next school year.
I think if I could just answer one thing, a couple of years back, we made, I don't know if it's an actual policy, but we made a policy of not having a policy and that it would be up to the building principal what those rules were. So they're directly, they should be directly making that to their staff, right? I presume that's still happening.
Yeah, we, I mean, we have that in.
Just on cellphones specifically.
Away for the day is NOC and Mullen, and then there's the cellphone holders in every high school classroom. So when the kids come in, they put their cellphones right in front of the class.
All the time?
All the time. Well, if they choose to.
Yeah. Well, they're expected to.
Yeah, they're expected to, yeah. So, I mean, I think it's talking to the principal, we have a principal's meeting tomorrow, so I'm going to bring it up to the principal, but surveying the staff.
Yeah, because I'm in that, whatever that was, four years ago or something, or before because it was pre-COVID, so six years, it could have been my first year. I don't know what's changed with the student body in that time or those things, but that's all. Thank you.
Just to follow up, I think that's a great thing to look into, and I fully support. I know Mr. Boger has also shared a book with all of us about, you know, technology and the impact, potential impacts. I would say this is a great first step, but if we decide to go down an avenue of rethinking practices and policies, you know, definitely should engage the student body in that discussion and also parents in some way, parents and guardians in some way. Because I think, I would be curious to know how the Ipswich, you know, Teachers Union discussion has happened, but I think one of the things that I hear from my own teenager, and I think this was evident when there was a national conversation about social media, and don't forget to talk to the people who are directly impacted by it, and don't make assumptions about these things without their input. So I think, I think it'd be really helpful to have that, and I know, I'm not saying you would dismiss that input, but I think that if we do go for it, I think it's a great first step to sort of have an initial conversation with principals in particular and then staff, but then I think if we have a broader discussion in the schools about what to do, I think definitely engaging with the student population and the families.
I agree, that was, I did read the book, The Anxious Generation, which is excellent, and they've made some good points about community buy-in, having everyone on the same page if we're going to do something like that. Did we have anything else for new business? All right, then.
Just one, just want to thank Ms. Cody for doing a marvelous job today.
Oh, thank you.
You're almost done. You're almost done.
Give me your extra lane.
I don't know if this makes any sense, but.
I'm sure it does. So we just have one last piece, which is I will move that we enter executive session for the purpose of discussing possible litigation and/or legal matters, and we will not reconvene in open session.
And that means you get to go home.
I need a second.
Second.
Yes, do you get the second? Get that to the mayor, I guess. And then we need to do a roll call vote.
Okay. So.
Executive session, yeah.
So Mayor Riden?
Yes.
Sarah Hall?
Yes.
Ryan Calligan?
Yes.
Brianna Higgins?
Yes.
Ethany Schaub?
Yes.
And Julia Walker?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Did the warrants didn't make it around, did they? Okay.
I'm hoping it's.
We can bring it in there, right?
Yeah.
He could turn me on.
Phil, you have to get out of here.